I'd like to call this inaugural meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Education. I need a motion to adopt the agenda as stated.
Um.
The disclosure, second is that on paper.
All right.
Next, we'll move on to our devotion. And for the last couple of months, I've kind of focused on what the theme was in the schools. So this is National Poetry Month. So I have a poem and a devotion together with the poem. This poem is called "The Little Seed," and it's by Kate Louise Brown. "The little seed was planted deep in the soil where roots could creep. It waited, it grew, and when the time was right, it reached up high to the morning light." The little seed starts in the dark, deep within the earth. It's not seen, it's not recognized, but it's there, waiting and growing. Just like that seed, we often face seasons in life where we may feel hidden or unsure. But God is always at work within us, even when we can't see it. In the poem, the seed eventually grows, and its purpose is fulfilled as it reaches for the light. This can remind us of our own journey with God. Sometimes it feels like we are in a waiting period, unsure of what's happening or where we're going. But just as the seed quietly grows underground, we too are growing in ways that are unseen by others. God is developing our character, our faith, and our trust in Him during these times. The light this seed reaches toward is the sun, and in our lives, the light is God's love and His guidance. Just as the seed needs the sun to grow, we need God's presence in our lives to grow and fail for us. Think about your own life and the life of the students in our schools. We know that even in quiet or difficult seasons, we are growing, and they are growing. And the scripture tonight is from Galatians 5:22-23. "But the fruit of the Spirit is love, joy, peace, forbearance, kindness, goodness, faithfulness, gentleness, and self-control." And now we will have our pledge of allegiance, and we have Dylan Martinez and Nadye Comets.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, on our agenda, we have a public comment with no one adjourned signing up. We'll move on to recognitions, and our first recognition is a resolution of esteem for Ms. Ella Ruth McIntosh.
As they're coming forward, it seems like each month I get to say something about somebody. But I taught with Ruth for years when I first went to Troy Elementary in 1980 something. She was there, and she was always a mentor to me. Montgomery County Board of Education Resolution of esteem for Ella Ruth McIntosh. Whereas our Heavenly Father in His infinite love and wisdom saw fit to call home Ella Ruth McIntosh on December 29, 2024, and whereas her dedication to Montgomery County Schools for 35 years as a teacher were a living testament to her integrity and skill, and whereas her loss will be deeply felt not only by those with whom she served, but also throughout the entire community and county. Now therefore, be it resolved that Montgomery County Board of Education goes on record in expressing a sense of real loss and regret in her passing. That a copy of this resolution be conveyed to her family as an indication of our deep sympathy, and that a copy of the same be filed as a part of the permanent minutes of the Board of Education.
Now, our next resolution of esteem is for Mr. Richard Junior Sheffield. If any of his family would like to come forward.
Montgomery County Board of Education Resolution of esteem for Richard Junior Sheffield. Whereas our Heavenly Father in His infinite love and wisdom saw fit to call home Richard Junior Sheffield on December 11, 2024, and whereas his dedication to Montgomery County Schools for nine years as Director of Child Nutrition were a living testament of his integrity and skill, and whereas his loss will be deeply felt not only by those with whom he served, but also throughout his entire community and county. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the Montgomery County Board of Education goes on record in expressing a sense of real loss and regret in his passing. That a copy of this resolution be conveyed to his family as an indication of our deep sympathy, and that a copy of the same be filed as a part of the permanent minutes of the Board of Education.
Moving on, we reach out to our recognition, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Alman.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. We've got our Employees of the Month, and this month it is Star Elementary. So if I can get Ms. Janet Deaton and Ms. Lisa Wood to come up. Ms. Wood is our Certified Employee of the Month for Star Elementary, and I'll ask Ms. Deaton to say something about this young lady. Congratulations.
Ms. Wood is hands down the most dedicated educator that I have ever worked with. When she was leaving Kander to come to Star, Mr. Blood told me I might have to take her laptop because she wants to work a lot of late nights. And I have not resorted to that because after 28 years, I've learned to pick my battles. So I'll go visit her and take her dinner. I've been trying to scare her once in a while. She heads up our PLCs meetings, constantly coming up with fun and engaging things to help our teachers grow. She heads our MTSS team, so our students are getting interventions to help close those gaps. Hands down, couldn't do the job without her. She is my right hand. The one thing I could not convince her to do is become a principal. That's where she draws the line. She's not going into administration, but she is really integral to our team at Star Elementary and most deserving of this honor.
Congratulations. All right, our next person is our Classified Staff Member of the Month, and that is Ms. Kathy Singleton. Congratulations.
Kathy has been recognized a few years ago as our custodian. But we kind of pushed her to go back to school to get her two-year degree to become a teacher assistant. And she was a great custodian, but she is an even better teacher assistant. She's Ms. Kerma Taylor's teacher assistant in a K-1 combo class. We had visitors there last week on campus, and they could not tell who the teacher was and who the TA was. Kathy takes our first grade students, and she is teaching them reading. She pushes into another classroom to provide interventions. And above all that, she is constantly kicking me on my toes, making me laugh, calling for maybe homework help. I think she's even called Mr. Alman to get some math homework help. She is...
I'm going to answer.
There was no...I couldn't help her with math. So she is truly an asset to our school, and I'm hoping in about another three or four years, even though she's telling me no, we're going to recognize her as being a teacher and employee of the month. She does a great job.
Good job. Our next recognition is Ms. Caitlin Jimenez Ruiz. She was our Montgomery County Schools... She was our Montgomery County Schools District Spelling Bee winner. Our district spelling bee is a regional qualifier. Congratulations. And she actually went to Bank of America Stadium on March 9th and competed at the regional competition there. But she is a great representation of our school system, and we appreciate you doing that for us. Good job. Congratulations. All right, so we have three other recognitions. So we have our 2025 North Carolina Governor's School recipients. We actually had three accepted this year. So if I can get Hillary Jimenez Perez to come up. She was selected to go into the mathematics discipline. Congratulations. Next, we had Elasia Britton. She was accepted into the English discipline. And then last, we had Ms. Isla Sewell. And she was selected for the natural science discipline. Congratulations, ladies. Congratulations, Leslie.
Thank you all so much. And next, we have our consent agenda. And next, we would have, I'll ask Ms. Janet Deaton to come forward. This was our board with competitive students and their Star Elementary presentations.
Thank you for giving us an opportunity to share a little bit about our school. Before I do that, I know y'all probably feel complaints all the time from different people, so I want to start this off with a compliment. Y'all know we had a death at our school, which was, you know, not easy. But I wanted to brag on our leadership team because they showed up. Not one or two of them, all of them showed up. Way Emily Jack, Joanna Allen, everybody. Dr. Shaw, and not just the day after, but the whole week after. They checked on us, made sure we were okay, showed up to the memorial. And it is very comforting to know that we work in such a supportive district. So thank you all. I hope you have a very good year. All right, let's get down to business. I talk too fast, let me know because I am a fast cooker. At Star Elementary, we are student-driven, data-focused, and community-centered. We are right in the heart of our community, and we cherish that and use that to our advantage. So looking at our school improvement goals for this year, we meet every summer. Lisa and I are going through the data. We're looking at this cohort to cohort, and we set the goal for math for this upcoming school year to be at 62% or greater. We finished the last year at 60.5%. In reading, we finished the year at 52.1%, so our goal is 56% or greater for this upcoming school. So just some things that we are strong in, strengths and proficiency. Our fourth grade reading, fifth grade reading, we're both well above the state and district average in '23 and in '24. Our third grade math was at or above state and district average in '23 and '24. Fourth grade math was well above state and district average in '23 and '24. And our fifth grade science was at or above the district average in 2024. Our kindergarten, first and second grade students, end of year, in class, they all get tested on that. Their scores and their proficiencies were above the district average in 2024 as well. So they're all things that we are very proud of. Our subgroups, we're really proud of this this year. Our Hispanic students and economically disadvantaged students are performing well above the state average. Our English language learners and students with disabilities are performing at or above the state average. And percent of English learners who made progress, which was at 50%, was twice as high as the state averages were. So strength in climate. Our school attendance and behavior are better than the district and state average. We work really hard on making our school a place where people, students, want to be, and also teachers want to be there as well. We're forever eating there, planning fun events, scavenger hunts, games, doing something to keep teachers happy, but also students happy as well. We have lots of extracurriculars like running club. We just hosted a girl on a run event Saturday at the school. We have chorus, STEM, lots of things to keep them engaged and happy at Star. So our North Carolina teacher working condition shows that 100% of our teachers believe we have a safe and positive school climate, and our teacher turnover rate is lower than that of the state average. I'm very grateful for that. Last year, we had improvements in two of our subgroups. Our Hispanic and economically disadvantaged subgroups grew from needs to seeds to create all of our subgroups in '23, '24 to seeds. So with all that in mind, we wanted to look at things, what can help us grow? What are maybe areas that we had not addressed with our school improvement team? And so this is where we started at. We knew going into this school year, we were going to have a new reading curriculum that we were adopting, and that we were going to have new science standards. So that meant planning and aligning, and I'm going to let Ms. Wood talk a little bit about that.
And, you know, to preface on this, I meet with the teachers weekly. We take a look at our standards. We're making sure that we're going over that curriculum. You know, we're not cutting anything out. The curriculum is very rigorous for CKLA. We love it. Thank you, Ms. Alman, for that.
Having hit a little croak because we didn't exactly think we were going to like it, but we actually love it.
We also have weekly PLCs where we share best practices, you know, and there's a lot of collaboration with our teachers. You know, some of them, they're doing great in their classroom. They're sharing with the other teachers, they can do that as well. Also, we are meeting every quarter, PDSA, to discuss our curriculum and making sure that our standards are in line and we're across the county making sure that those standards are being taught with the family.
There's some work samples of some of the CKLA work that our students have done. And as a former history teacher, it just makes my heart happy to go through those classrooms. Today, I was in the rooms in second grade studying the Civil War. Fourth grade studying the American Revolution. Fifth grade just finished reading a play I read as a singer with Jerry Thompson, A Midsummer's Night Dream, and they weren't getting it. As you can see here, they've done lots of hands-on projects, just great work samples. All of this background knowledge, because it is heavy on science and social studies, there is no way that their reading scores cannot go up because it's going to absolutely improve their comprehension.
And also the writing, it's subregion writing, which we have not had a lot of in the past. So let me just look at these, lots of graphic organizers.
So our next area that we wanted to work on was transitions. We've always done this from pre-K kindergarten and fifth grade to middle school, but we had not addressed it holistically. We do meet at the end of the year. Lisa leads that PLC so the teachers can have conversations. And our teachers put the kids, so like kindergarten, we'll put first graders in groups. And they'll do that based on the strengths of the students and what they need, and they'll have those conversations. But this year, we wanted to do it whole school. So we have a Meet My Teacher Day schedule for May the 13th, where all of the students will go up and meet who their teacher will be for the next year so they can go ahead and start building those relationships. The parents are not going to have to wait until the summertime for that postcard. They're always so anxious about getting, they already know going in. They'll know what their supplies and things their students will need for that following school year. It's just going to build communication with the community throughout our building.
Feel positive relationships between those kids and don't, you know, with anxiety. The kids are going to be, you know, so...
We have a couple of kids who always dread the next school year because they don't want to leave their teachers. I put to heed some of that. Our next focus for our school improvement team was that all of our teachers would be attended to our students' emotional states and not their helping learn to manage their emotions. I think that is a life skill that will carry them. I've put some research in here for you because it does affect their academics. If they're having an emotional meltdown and they're having to pull it out of the classroom, they're missing instruction in that room. And it is a skill that you have to learn how to manage your emotions. And our guidance council provides zones of regulation so they can go in and they'll tell you if they're angry, they're kind of in a red zone. If they're in a good mood, they might be in a green zone. They can identify that and what that feels like physically in their body. Our teachers will come in and they'll do morning check-ins. We've got cool-down corners that might, they may have fidgets and little comfy things to sit on in the room. If they get to the point where they're starting to have a meltdown and they want to cut that off, we, as a PDA's committee, we will analyze their negativity, or their trends or patterns. Like, all these kids are struggling with transitions. What can we do to make that easier for them? There may be some kids whose hands we need to hold during transitions. It keeps them, you know, even keel with their emotions. But we're always working to create a positive, rigorous climate at our school. So again, everybody won't stay there, and it has been successful. We've seen a reduction in our discipline referrals this year.
I also had a PLC with the teachers based on coaching skill mechanisms, and I gave them a plethora of ideas that they can use for themselves and for their students. And so they're using those in the classrooms. So that was really enlightening.
This was one of our initiatives that we started this year. We noticed in our data, our students that frequently were not showing growth was because they were out a lot. And at the elementary level, a lot of times that is a parent issue. And so we wanted to create some incentives, and this was our guidance counselor, Ms. Douglas. This is kind of her baby. I was like, we're having kids that are out a lot, what can we do? And so she created, we call it the show-up challenge. You see some pictures here at Christmas where those students were selected. The criteria in place was you couldn't have any write-ups and less than six unexcused excused accesses for the first half of the year. We'll do it twice. We'll have another group of students who we recognize at the end of the school year. And if you had three or more, you needed to have a doctor's note. We partnered with the Star United Methodist Church. They were like, hey, we want to write a grant, what can we help you with? And I'm like, this is perfect. It helps our tenants, it's going to grow our academics. And so we wrote the grant, and Ms. Douglas headed all this up. Every one of those children received a personalized Stanley Cup, a T-shirt, a beanie, Rubik's Cube, fidgets, certificates. They got recognized at an assembly and announced over the intercom as well. So we'll know at the end of the year if it's paying off, but we are going to get to recognize another group of students at the end of the school year. They were very excited about all that stuff, especially that Stanley Cup. Again, looking at our attendance, this was a little project I took on this past summer. I created attendance boards that are outside all of our classrooms. And every day, the teachers mark that, and you can see here where they've been marking attendance. If the class gets 100% perfect attendance, you know, the teachers celebrate that. The whole class will get a dojo point. I walk by the rooms, I may see they have perfect attendance and put that in as a dojo points because the parents see that. Hey, my kid's class got a dojo point from Ms. Deaton because they had perfect attendance. This must be something that is important. And at the end of the month, our data manager tallies all that up. And any classes that had 95% or higher attendance can spin an incentive wheel, this little digital wheel I created, easy peasy. And then they get extra recess. They might get a 10-minute longer lunch. They might want popsicles or popcorn or whatever it is there that wheel lands on. We're going to provide that for them so they know that it's important. At the end of my announcements, I always remind the teachers to go ahead and mark their attendance, and I tell to the students, you got to show up to grow up. You know, we need you to blow up. We want you to grow. Does anybody have any questions?
Good job, Lenny.
Thank you. Nice events at our school, our Battle of the Book Singing Place Second, and our writing team, our choral production here, Read Across America Week, and Red Ribbon Week, and our someone special dances and special moments that make our school a nice place to be. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good evening, Board. Tonight, I would like to share that the North Carolina School Boards Association released a policy memo that encouraged school districts to review all of their local policies and determine whether their policies, regulations, or processes need to be modified in light of the recent guidance from the U.S. Department of Ed's Office of Civil Rights. The North Carolina School Board Association memo also identified the specific policies that the NCSSBA policy manual recommended for review. These recommended reviews were divided into two sections. Ones were policies that reference the term diversity and/or equity, and the other referenced policies that revert to gender identity. In summary, this memo is for information purposes only, and no action is required at this time. Currently, there are no specific concerns that any of our policies violate the current law, but it is suggested that districts review and be aware of race and gender-related policies. So in your packet, I've enclosed all of the identified policies for you to familiarize yourself with with all of ours that reference either race and/or gender and/or diversity and/or equity. So again, no action is needed. It was just suggested that the Board be aware of all of our current policies that include any of those terms in light of everything that's been passed through the Department of Ed. Lots of good reading there.
Right, I appreciate you highlighting that.
And Max and I have went over everything with a fine-tooth comb. And, you know, we are a member of a division of the School Board Association that focuses on policy. And so anytime a policy change is needed to keep us in compliance, they send it to us. And they have not done anything other than send us that memo.
Thank you. Next, we'll move down to Mr. Alman's second round of remarks.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Tonight, I just wanted to discuss some of the recent legislative developments and the impacts that they could have on our district. There are multiple bills being submitted during this long session. They've been in session for eight weeks, and not all of these are associated with the school system, but there have already been 760 bills submitted by the Senate alone. I don't even have a number of how many have been submitted by the House. But one bill in particular, a significant proposal currently under consideration, is a Senate Bill 754 titled "School Calendar Flexibility: A New Alternative." This bill does aim to provide our school district with increased flexibility with the setting of the academic calendar, but has requirements that make it very difficult to implement. And I know we have already approved our calendar for next year, but if this goes into effect, we're going to have to definitely revisit that. Ms. Epps and I both sat through a meeting today with School Board Association, and some of what I'm going to finish up with was discussed there. But the bill has been introduced by a very influential senator. I'm not going to name that person's name, but just trust me.
I can imagine.
It's a very powerful individual, so it could very well make it into law. But the new calendar law or bill allows for two options. We can maintain the current calendar law as is, where it is the Monday closest to August 26. That would push testing again back to the second semester, which we could do the innovative calendar again to shorten first semester, lengthen second semester to do testing before. And then we have to close school by the Friday closest to June 11. The option that they are giving us in this calendar law is that we can begin the academic year as early as the Monday closest to August 19, which in the upcoming year would be August 18. But the requirement there is we have to end the Friday before Memorial Day. So again, it compacts all of that. But there are a lot of other requirements in there, and we can kind of flesh that out if it becomes law. But like, one of the semesters have to be equal. So that kind of limits the shortening and lengthening of semesters to make sure that you can get testing done before Christmas. But again, so this proposed bill is still focused, like the old calendar law, solely on the interest of business dependent upon summer tourism in the eastern part of the state. It's still not what is what would benefit us. They're only focusing on the eastern seaboard. We have already approved an early start calendar, but if this new law is passed, we could face significantly stricter punishment by the state. If a district violates this newly established calendar parameter, the superintendent of public construction... violates this newly established calendar parameter, the superintendent of public construction, which is Mogerain, is tasked with investigating districts out of compliance and reporting this to the State Board of Education. Previous penalties for violation of school calendar law were that the state would withhold the superintendent's salary allotment. In some districts, that's not significant. In ours, it still is. But the new penalties can levy significant monetary and operational impacts to the district. Potential repercussions for noncompliance include withholding the funding allotments for your entire central office staff, which would be a major blow to any district, not just ours. The General Assembly can impact the future governance of the district. In the, in the meeting that we were in today, they do not know exactly if that means that they have the authority to remove the sitting superintendent or if they have the authority to disband the school board. So we don't really know exactly what that entails. But that's what it's written is that they can impact the governance of the district. And then the bill also permits residents and local business owners to pursue legal action against any noncompliant school board. So as we continue to monitor these legislative developments, our priority always remains delivering a high-quality education to our students while adhering to the state mandates and considering community interest. We have already begun preliminary discussions to meet the needs of MCS students aligned with these two options. But we are going to have to continue proactively preparing in case we need to make these potential adjustments. You know, by doing this, we can ensure that any necessary changes serve the best interest of our students. And of course, we can keep our community informed if we are required to make any changes to our calendar for next school.
The, the calendar that we approved was going to start two weeks earlier than normal.
August 11th, yeah. Which would be out of compliance with this. So we could, if we stayed with that calendar, they could come in and impose those new, those three.
It just hasn't been passed yet.
It's, it has some very heavy hitters as the primary sponsors of it. It's probably, it probably will pass.
So is it going to be, even if it's a week, is that even worth it for a week?
No, we can't take the chance.
We have, we will, we will present something to you guys.
I mean, the option was a week, right?
Oh, you know, he's talking about you.
Yeah, I'm not talking about, you know, over, you know, clouding place of law. I'm just saying.
But if we go that route, you have to have the even semester.
Yeah. So, so we, again, we've started preliminary discussions. It's possible. Are the teachers going to like it? I will go ahead and tell you the answer's going to be no. But it is possible. And if it comes into, you know, if it, if it does become law, we will bring an option. We will have to reconvene the calendar committee just to have those conversations with those representatives of the school. We will not have a huge turnaround time because we will have to act fast because we do not know when this is going to go into effect. There was some speculation in the meeting today that this could be lumped into the budget. And so it could be like a midnight, you know, before school starts kind of thing. And this is proposed to go into effect 25, 26 school year. So we don't know when it's going to pass, but if it does, they could levy these more strict penalties against us. But again, we can make it work. I'm just going to go ahead and be perfectly upfront with you guys that the teachers are not going to like it because we may have to take the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. We may have to take December 22nd and make it a testing day. We, we've bounced some ideas around. I'm not saying that that will happen. I'm just saying it's going to be very tight. And there, one of the things that came up in the meeting that we've already kind of realized is there is not going to be very much room at all for teacher workdays inside. So there's going to be long stretches of, like, there was one stretch we were looking at today. It's going to be like seven and a half weeks before a break within the calendar for teachers to have a workday or something. And in, you know, the context of, of teaching kids, that is a long stretch without some form of a break.
When the legislators think they can take 10 days at the beginning and 10 days at the end.
Call it a week.
I mean, that's just how far removed they are from this. Let's add 10 or 15 minutes to the day so you can get your 180, whatever. You know, like they're just so far removed. So one thing they did encourage, and it's not something Wade probably can say, but I'll say it, is to reach out kindly to your representatives and just let them know what that means for our county. I think that that is just, they, one of the things they are going to try to, bill is going to try to see if they can put it off for a year. That was another thing they talked about. But we don't know if that would happen either. So.
We just need to make the parents know this thing's probably going to change.
Well, that was the main reason for me bringing it up tonight. So now it is publicly known that this is out there.
Can we put it on our website?
I mean, this is out there. It's on the legislator website right now.
It's not our fault.
Well, we did caveat the calendar that was passed.
We did.
We had said, hey.
Right.
And that was before we knew of this. I mean, that was just.
This passed. Well, we're, we, yeah, Dr. Shaw and I have already kind of come to that realization. We're going to have to go ahead and have those preliminary conversations.
Had it ready.
When they say, oh, we need to.
Yeah. We've got something kind of framed up already to present to them. We did that this morning.
What about the bill for prohibiting cell phones? What is that?
So that has changed slightly. That has now not, it has become more lenient. So now it is stated in there that they do not want students to have cellular devices. But if a teacher sees value and wants to use it, then they can use it. So they've already removed the teeth from that.
The problem is, is they have lumped all electronics into one bill. So it could include your computer. You know, and all of our students use their computers because we don't have the book section.
Where did you go back to what you originally?
Well, and, and we listened, some of us were on a Zoom spring law conference on Thursday and Friday mornings. And is it Friday morning? Thursday morning. They talked about cellphones, that bill specifically. And they, we listened to the principal at Ashville High School and what they have done. So I'm glad to, anybody else that was on that webinar, we can share what they did because it seems to be working in Ashville.
Four parents complained. That was it.
It's also working in Chad and Cal.
Right. So we'll share what they, what the Ashville, what they've done. They have a similar situation as far as students moving from campus to campus. So we can talk about that. But they have done something.
I mean, there are, there are a lot of bills out right now. And some of them apply to education. Like there's one out there right now where they're going to do away with block scheduling at the high school level. And that could have a major impact on how we operate our high schools. I don't know if that's going to gain traction. I asked that question in the meeting today, and they said that they haven't really heard anything about that one in a while. There's another bill that's out there that somebody has, you know, submitted that would basically reshape mathematics at the secondary level. Will it gain traction? I don't know. Like I said, they have submitted 760 Senate bills in eight weeks. And I, I want to say that I heard there were 1,100 on the House side. I don't know that to be factual. But if any of those bills gain traction, we just need to make sure that we're paying attention if it applies to the school system.
There's one about American flags, about one being in all classrooms, the pledge being seen, being said one hour into the day. Like you can't have it one hour and 30 minutes after your second. You know, like it's just, it's a very minor matter.
Not a while.
Yeah.
That's, I wish they would allow us to do that. But unfortunately, that's not the case. But so that's all.
Any other comments?
Motion to adjourn.
Don't we have the sound?
I'll make it second.
Second.
We don't have the sound.
Mr. Dozier, Mr. Epps, second, on favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Epps adjourned.